Thank you.
Hey, Lacy.
Hey, how's it going?
Going very well. We're hitting some nice, perfect spring in between weather these last couple of days. It feels good.
Yeah, I agree. Um, did you, so I, did you get that email back from, is it Shelley with Salt Lake Transit? Or did she just send one back to me?
I, I didn't see a response from that because I know you followed up after I forwarded it to you.
Yeah, so it looks, so as of just a few days ago, she was still waiting and she was taking longer than she thought, but yeah.
Not surprised. It's a federal grant. But that's great. I appreciate you following up.
Yeah, no.
Is that looking positive, Lacy?
Um, I, I don't know. I mean, if, if so, great. She just hasn't heard back one way or another. So they haven't come back with any feedback saying we need more or anything like that, but she just hasn't heard, so.
Okay, cool. So we have Lacy and Brandon. Hey, Brandon, how are you?
Doing well. How are you?
I'm good. Hi, Leana.
Hello, everyone.
And here's the real Emily, Emily Campbell.
I made it.
Oh, they're, I'm like, how could I have the wrong Emily? How are you?
I'm doing great. How are you all doing?
Good, good. We're busy. We're busy in this office. Everything's, you know, we're just moving right along.
It's like I emerged from my house and suddenly it's almost summer. It's been crazy.
I planted a little urban garden. I, I, I have a, while we're waiting for people to, I have a patio and so I bought one of these standing, you know, gardening things and I filled it with, but I already have tomatoes. I'm so excited.
Nice. Awesome.
Yeah.
I am behind on my garden this year, so it's the garden of the mind I'm cultivating.
I've killed everything. I've killed cactus, so there's no guarantee anything's gonna really flourish. But I'm happy to know that they're there and I see a few tomatoes.
Wonderful. That's wonderful.
All right, so let's see. We are waiting. We have Gabriel. There you are. How are you?
Good, thanks. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone.
All right, and I think we are just about, so we have Lacy, Brandon, Leana, Emily, and Gabriel. And I know that Nora, Nora Shepherd from the city is gonna join us, so I'm waiting for her. And then I think Carly will be coming on a little bit later. So we'll wait just another minute or two. And does everybody have a copy? I wanted to check of the bylaws and the official documents that were, we had sent them out, but I just want to make sure if you, if you haven't received the diversification action plan or the, the bylaws or the resolution, let us know and we will get those, we'll get those out to you immediately. Let's see here. All right, it looks like.
Gabe, all this time I've been seeing that wood paneled background. I just thought it was shelves. I'm, I'm shocked to find out if your fridge.
Um, when we, when I built the, when we built this house, there's like these Sears outlet locations and they sell really nice appliances for, that have dents and stuff in them. And I never thought I would live in the house fancy enough to have a custom front cabinet on it, but I found one of those and, and was able to get it here. So it's kind of funny.
That's awesome.
Glad I fooled you.
Just to give, well, give an introduction, August Granath is our, for those of you that haven't been introduced, he's our business specialist, our first full-time employee for economic development. So we're, we're finally official that we have a department, which is awesome. And then we were lucky enough to find Ben Alter, who is our Vista volunteer. And he hails originally from Virginia via Texas and now Utah. So, and he visited this park when he was a kid, I guess, younger. So he's a little bit familiar with it. So Ben and August, who's actually his family, is from Utah and they live in Salt Lake. We're actually really, I'm grateful to have them both on board and we've all been working at warp speed here to, to try to accomplish as much as we can. And I've, I've got those four guys running in like 10 different directions, but, but I figure they're young and they can take it. So they're, they're, they're good to go. So I.
And I, and I should say that although I am a native Utahan, I am a first generation Utahan, and so I cannot claim the, the deep roots that many do have in this community.
Really? So we're, we're hoping, I'm hoping that we will be able to accomplish. I have really high standards and a lot, my sights set very high on making a difference in our community. And I want this, this council, advisory council, to be the same, to make a difference. And I know that we can and we have a lot of work ahead of us. So, so, well, I think we'll start the meeting. So I will, it is 3:07 and I will call the meeting to order. So I guess what I want to do is offer an official introduction to Emily Campbell, who, I had the wrong Emily, the last meeting. So, but I am thrilled that she's here. She's such an addition to, she's the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. She's just doing a great job and welcome aboard, Emily.
Thank you, Elaine. Yeah, it's lovely, lovely to meet you all. I'm really excited about this and I think planning, in my role, it's, it's as the hands-on to the planning commission that I hope I can also contribute my own experience. And I think as we think about planning in the community and as we think about economic development and community, the two really go hand in hand. You know, where do we want to be? How do we structure the environment to create that diversity and that growth? And then how do we ensure that we action on it? And just quick kind of background on me, my, my background's actually in economics and I worked for a few years for the Chief Economist Metro Denver, Metro Denver EDC, and also the Larimer County EDC very closely and led our cluster study analysis there as well as diversification, not diversification, differentiation reports. So, you know, making sure that we were calling out and positioning the strengths of our various communities, both as a, as a county area, metro area, and individual cities and townships. And also worked very closely and authored or co-authored a large traffic study on the I-70 corridor. So looking at the impact of, of traffic on how that affects, you know, opportunities and costs for economic growth in the areas nearby. So it's been some time, but I do have some direct experience with, with walkability, with congestion analysis and just looking at the costs that that can create and the opportunities that can create for communities. So lots of things that parallel where we're at right now and I'm looking forward to getting my feet back wet in that water.
And you just hired a, a director for
For the county.
The county. So that's great. That's.
Yes, yes. A couple new, new people in that office and I, both, both new hires are going to just be wonderful assets to the community, filling some opportunities that we had to diversify skillsets in the county and experience. And I think just gonna be wonderful assets to take us far. So I'm really looking forward to that.
That's good news to hear that, that, that's already, that's in place. So wonderful. Well, welcome aboard. And I guess what we wanted to do is then move, because we have a lot of ground to cover today. So are there any conflicts of interest, disclosures, or ex parte communication that we might want to get out there from anyone? All right, and I don't see any citizens, citizens on the line. And if they do come on, we'll identify them. All right. So we're gonna change the, the agenda just a little bit if, if, from, we had presentation, I had none scheduled because I had sent out a recap of the, the diversification strategic economic diversification action plan. And I started, I tried to pull bits and pieces of it and put it in a sort of an easier form for everyone to read. However, August has put together, and he did work with Ben and they, August has a presentation that we're gonna run through that sort of pulls together and gels together that, that action plan so we can sort of get down to the nuts and bolts of what we're looking to do. Because as I, I, we had a meeting earlier today and I really want, I don't want to be here year after year accomplishing nothing and just regurgitating the same talking points month after month. I think we have to really show that this council can make headway. We can really make a difference and we're gonna really help our community. So having said that, I wanted to, August will start with his presentation and then we'll go into the discussion and action items if, if everyone is in agreement with that. Okay. All right. So August, I guess I can share the screen with you.
I should be able to just share the screen. Let me just try it.
Hopefully you can. All right.
All right. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Everybody can hear me? Okay? Okay, great. So I am very excited to kind of cover our bases here. This is basically a high-level overview of not only the strategic action plan, but also kind of the context of why we're doing diversification, a little bit of history, and kind of an overview of the county's actions so far on diversification. So that at the end of this presentation, we have a clear understanding of why we're doing this as well as how we're planning to move forward and take, you know, very clear and, and direct action as a body here. So I'll get right into it if I can. So in order to figure out where we're going with regards to economic diversification in the county, I think it's prudent to contextualize our current economic situation with a bit of history. And we will begin in 1880, when the valley was permanently settled by white folks. However, I want to briefly acknowledge, especially given the recent desecration at Birthing Rock and Sunshine Wall, that the county was not empty before 1880. And I think we all know this, but just reinforcing that, you know, Grand County sits on the tribal lands of the Utes, the N'chut people. And before that was occupied by Fremont and ancestral Puebloan folks. And to this day remains a home to many numerous indigenous individuals from many tribes. With that in mind, we're gonna go through our first kind of round of booms and busts in the economy of our area with agriculture. So for about 70 years, from 1880 to 1950, agriculture was the predominating economic industry in our area, peaking in the 20s and 30s. In the 20s, crops, crop values peaked with hay being the majority producer of that value. And in the 30s, livestock peaked with sheep making 70% of that value. At this point, agriculture provided the, the largest section of jobs in the county. So, you know, this isn't the first time that a single economy predominated. Next, we go to the next chunk of history for 30 years, from 1950 to 1980 approximately. Mining replaced agriculture as the primary economic activity of our area. I think we all know that uranium had a big boom in the 50s with Charlie Steen and Cold War efforts to create a high-quality and reliable domestic source for uranium, which led to Moab becoming a boom town and stressing, you know, tripling the population in a decade, stressing local infrastructure and really beginning the housing crisis that we have today. I think it's important to note that, you know, that Grand County's population got to about 6,000 or so at that point from about 2,000. And it hasn't increased all that much more in the urban center of Moab. So, you know, we're working with a similar amount of housing supply as we had 70 years ago. Just good for context. And then as uranium's activity kind of decreased, huge, the largest reserve of potash was discovered. Shouts out to Intrepid and Brad on the call and became a large economic driver of the community and still remains one of the largest employers in our community today. Shifting forward, August, one last note is that in the 60s, mining provided a similar amount, 42% of all jobs in the county. Which takes us to our kind of current era of outdoor recreation and tourism being the predominating economic industry, starting with the Goff Brothers and Rim Cycleri and mountain biking in the 80s, all the way up to the kind of recent boom with UTVs and motorized, accessible off-road motorized recreation. And so another data point, in Q1 of 2020, tourism provided 62% of all jobs in Grand County. So, you know, this is the most concentrated we've been in our history, I think, which is important to kind of consider. So with that in mind, you know, we obviously had a gut check this past spring. And although we did have a record fall and are currently having a record spring and that, you know, I think for most people who are trying to find employees and just operate a, a business in our county today, it's easy to forget kind of what happened last year. But, you know, COVID showed us what the loss of this tourism-driven economic activity can do. So I think that a lot of this came out of an awareness that we need to be prepared as a county for future shocks that could threaten our currently non-diversified economy. And also that such shocks, you know, it's not just gonna be a pandemic. It could be climate-related shocks. It could be spikes in gas prices that reduce interest in car-based tourism or just threats due to competing tourism destinations. You know, maybe Moab isn't gonna be the hotspot forever. And to contextualize that with data, comparing April 2019 to April 2020, Grand County lost 60% of gross taxable sales and 94% of all hotel revenue. So in a community that contains a municipality with no property tax and relies heavily on sales taxes to provide services, as well as a county that receives millions of dollars in tax revenues from lodging businesses, I think the reality is that our community is not currently built to be resilient to an economic shock to our tourism industry and its subsequent tax dollars. Which brings us to the point of, okay, well, we have this information. We kind of know that we're, we're stuck in this corner. What do we do? And I think the lesson is that our county can no longer rely on boom and bust growth and rather need to move towards long-term, slow, and sustainable economic growth. And the recommendation from the Economic Diversification Action Plan that we'll go over shortly is to quote, "build upon the recreation and tourism economy and to spread risk and create value across a larger range of industries." So, which brings us to what has the county done so far to address these concerns and to move forward with diversification? First of all, it created, outgoing Commissioner Curtis Wells drafted Resolution 3260, which was amended and then passed by the county commission in December of last year. What does that resolution contain? It first created this council that is meeting for the second time today, as well as adopted the Diversification Action Plan as quote, "an accurate overview of the current barriers to economic diversification and broader community development needs." Additionally, the county successfully lobbied to change state law governing TRT spending to allow flexibility at the local level for us to spend some of that money on economic diversification and ideally fund our department and allow us to do stuff. At this point, that money has not been allocated, but we fully expect that to happen in coming weeks or months or so. So I pulled up a couple of elements of the resolution, which is also the bylaws for this group. So I think it's useful to just kind of get an idea of what's in the spirit of that resolution and ground ourselves in the purpose of what this, you know, council was created for in the first place. First of all, I'm, I'm just gonna read this word for word. Whereas, Grand County wishes to shorten the gap between wages and cost of living by creating, attracting, and growing higher-paying job opportunities for its residents. Whereas, the Grand County Commission recognizes the need to provide a clear direction and measurable goals and objectives for staff in the commitment to diversify the economy in Grand County. Lastly, the commission has identified the need for economic diversification for the Economic Diversification Advisory Council to review existing and future ordinances to identify and mitigate barriers to economic diversification and assist the commission and staff, us, in completing an updated economic development strategic plan for the general plan update in 2021. And maybe this is a question for a later time, but I'm not sure if a general plan update is in the works. Gabe can maybe speak to that at a later time. But, you know, I think clearly there is some push to make sure that this is a part of, of future general planning efforts. And I'm just gonna keep going through this and we can all, you know, feel free to take notes and I can go refer to more slides after this, but I'm just gonna go through the presentation in full first. The last section is just going into this action plan. Hope, hopefully people recognize it's lovely green cover. Have spent hours poring over it as I have. But if you haven't, hopefully this covers all of our bases in terms of understanding what's in there. So first, it kind of briefly underscores what we just talked about, which is why is diversification necessary? And sums it up by identifying that wages in the county are too low, that those wages come from, or that really workers are concentrated in a few low-wage industries that dominate the economy and that the county is significantly older than average on the state, which does not necessarily bode well for the future economic activity of the county as those folks who are here age. And it is grounded in the last county general plan, which was from 2012. So the vision for the economic development of the county in the general plan is summed up in one sentence, which is a diverse, prosperous, and sustainable economy. And it lays out four goals in which to achieve that vision. First is to make the county attractive for a wide range of economic sectors. Second is to facilitate business development through land use standards and approval processes that are clear, predictable, consistent, fair, timely, and cost-effective. We've seen that language somewhere else. Third, to support the development and maintenance of infrastructure necessary for a sustainable local economy. And last, to support the continuance of agriculture with incentives and land use flexibility. Now, these are, this is, these are direct quotes directly from the general plan. So the folks that put together the action plan, put together, identified three strategies to address those goals. First is to actively pursue partnerships with targeted industries that we feel will fill that gap that's not tourism in a robust diversified economy. Secondly, it is to ensure that the county government takes an active role in regulatory restructuring. This council is one part of that strategy. Third is to incentivize nodal development, that is, not just rely on the highway corridor around Main Street and North for all development and commercial activity, but to intentionally design and designate areas such as the new USU campus buildout or the new set of commercial storefronts that will be built alongside Arroyo Crossing as areas for future neighborhood centers and future economic development. And in concert with that is for those areas that we are not designating for development to ensure that we're actively making sure that they can remain open spaces for agriculture or recreation. So I'm gonna divide, dive a little deeper into each one really quickly. So strategy number one addresses goal number one. I'm not gonna say it again. And, but, you know, partner with and incentivize the companies you want. And, you know, really, really underscores creating some sort of incentive package to attract those, those groups. And they, they, they go into three target sectors that they suggest for the first round of businesses. So remote professionals, health and wellness, and electric vehicles, innovative technologies, and outdoor recreation. So I'm gonna go into each of those really quickly and how they kind of see that. So in, for remote professionals, I think there's two buckets. One is for locals. So that is upscaling individuals who already live here, who feel that they're not getting enough wages and want to work, you know, maybe a year-round, more, you know, full-time job out of their kitchen or second bedroom or, or, you know, take advantage of infrastructure that maybe will build out to support those workers. And there are yard grave programs like Utah State's Rural Online Initiative to train those folks on how to be a remote worker and connect them to jobs that already exist for people who are hiring for remote workers in rural areas. The other side is to attract new talent. Folks that already work remotely, know what they're doing, have a job, and are interested in the amenities of Grand County. The issue there is trying to balance the concerns of additional individuals here as well as housing constraints with the tax benefits and honestly, the fresh ideas and you know, just energy that new folks can bring. I think if I understand Emily's background, she works remotely and is maybe that exact kind of person. So here she is doing stuff intentionally in the county to, to, to make the area better. I think that there is room for remote professionals who are interested in making our county better. Um, the other area is health and wellness. So they identified primarily that we already have a really good regional hub for healthcare in the hospital. And, you know, an interest in alternative therapies such as meditation, mindfulness, nature therapy, et cetera. And identifying those as perhaps areas where you can create, you know, not necessarily tourism industries, but, you know, healing industries or businesses that are, that are kind of, can work in concert with the hospital and, and make that kind of a part of our brand. I think Sedona is an area that has done that perhaps to an extreme, but, you know, something to look at. And then the last is looking at electronic vehicles, innovative technologies, outdoor recreation. I think it's undeniable that Grand County is perhaps the premier destination for off-road motorized recreation in the United States. If not, you know, one top three or whatever. And, you know, as we've experienced in the last couple of months and perhaps longer before my time in here, in town, there is, that has created tension and that is, that has caused this concert in the community. And I think that it can be an opportunity and will be a part of this community and it's not going away. And so I think that if, they, they, they outline a potential, you know, research and development hub for electric off-road vehicles and making Moab kind of the place for electric off-road. I think is an opportunity to capitalize on the off-road recreation we already have with some of the sustainability. on the off-road recreation we already have with some of the sustainability initiatives and goals of the community, to be more climate-friendly, to reduce noise pollution, to reduce pollution, pollution as well. And I've heard that they are kind of awesome. I've heard if you ride the e-dirt bikes, their kick is stronger than any motorized vehicle. But cost is a concern. Anyway, that's too deep. And then other just outdoor product businesses, I think it's very on-brand for Moab. We already have some very small independent retailers. And yeah, so those are those three areas. Then these ones are a little bit quicker. They don't go into so depth, so much depth. But strategy two is regulatory restructuring, which addresses two goals and is really about actively reviewing the land use code to making sure that we're able to do economic diversification and not run into speed bumps along the way. As well as do really intentional collaboration with the city as we're pursuing diversification with regards to infrastructure and to make sure that our codes are aligned in the county and the city. Lastly, I mentioned this before, incentivizing nodal development while actively preserving lands not slated for development. So that addresses goal four, which I forgot to add in there. But as I mentioned, you know, creating new areas for neighborhood centers, incentivizing that development, and then for the areas that we are not developing, incentivize the preservation of those spaces for open land. Lastly, I'm not going to get into this, but it also goes over a host of incentives that we can use to enact these policies. But that's something we'd like to cover in future discussions and make sure that this board and council is aware of what our, what our tools are really. The last, the last part of this is, and I think a big part of the intentionality of passing this resolution is so that Elaine and myself and Ben and our department have clear goals, clear direction in terms of what do we actually do with that diverted TRT money once we have it. And so they lay out a handful, basically taking all of this and putting very discreet timelines and deliverables on each of these. We've also added a handful of things that we think are priorities. We've accomplished two of them. So let's see if it... There we go. We created the board. So we did something there. That's great. We've also taken this list and created a Google sheet so we can actually work towards these goals going forward so that all of you have transparency into what we're working on. And this is something that I think will be a reference point going forward for this council. And I'll send this out later, but it's basically everything in there. So I won't go into it too much at this point. And then there's just some credits if you want to look at them in the future. But that's, that's everything I have. And so I'll stop sharing and, or maybe if people have questions, I can go back while the share is still on.
August, early in the presentation, you noted that 62% of jobs in 2020 were tourism, in tourism. If you have a little more information about that, I'd love to just ask a few questions there just to get a better sense of the resilience of that sector.
I can try my best.
Yeah, or even just questions to note, I think it would be helpful for us to kind of know these if we don't. So one is in tourism, I'm going to assume that that's tourism-driven, but it may be sort of support industry. So you know, for example, we've got retail that wouldn't be directly tourism-related, but is there largely to support the tourism base. Is that fair?
I think that's fair.
Okay. I'd really be curious to understand how wages differ across sectors. So we have, you know, mining, we have government and so on. Like how stressed is that tourism segment and how big is the divide? And I also would be very curious to know within that segment, how much of that is driven by local ownership or small business entrepreneurship versus large brand? You know, like are we, there's sort of the strip mall complex where you have the singular large wait, where if we ever did have a large hotel chain leave, would it be a significant disruptor? Or are we more of a sort of networked economy where despite the depth of that single sector in our economy, it's spread out across multiple smaller entities? I'd be curious if you have a high-level perspective on that.
Yeah, well, what I can share with you really briefly, I can, let me see if I can do this. If I do a share.
We might not want to get too much in the weeds right now. I think maybe what we'll do, Emily, is take all of your questions and maybe find all the correct documents, you know, the statistics to back that up. And we can share that with you before, within the next couple of weeks.
That'd be amazing. Yeah. No, thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks, Emily.
I think we can do that because then I think it would be good. Everyone will, you know, will actually have documentation that sort of goes into all of that. And those are actually excellent questions. I think we will, we'll prepare that and we'll send it out to everybody. You know, we wanted to sort of put this in a format that where we could get your feedback and determine how, you know, what the next, the next steps would be. So yes, we can, and we'll be happy to do that for you.
So Ben, did you take note of that that question was? Ben's taking some notes here.
Yep, I've got it all. I will say, Emily, that I'm sure right after this, I will follow up with you with the Utah jobs. In case you haven't been to the workforce website, there is a ton of data there that will answer some of your questions really quickly. We'll definitely go a little more in-depth, you know, in a larger response. Thank you for asking.
What I'd like to recommend is that Ben and August maybe put together the statistics from the information that we have and what sources you're finding. And then we can answer Emily's questions and we can send that out to the body so that everybody can look at it. Okay, cool. All right. Any other questions or comments?
I have just a comment, like if we're going to have these kinds of reports and I'm assuming that you'll have, you said this is a Google document that you would be sharing for transparency, if we can have those documents all kind of in a central location.
Yeah. Yeah. In fact, we can build a file of a Google Doc that will have everything in there so that you can, we'll share that with everyone and you'll have access to it. That'll just make it easier. Cool. Okay. Well, thank you, August, for the presentation. And I think you'll find that this is sort of, as we move into the rest of the agenda and as we move into the rest of the meetings for the next several months, that, and referring back to this particular document, that, that presentation that August put together and also the timeline, the sheet that he's documented, I think it'll just make it easier for us to be able to work on these projects and then update everyone. We just want to keep things moving as quickly as we can. You know, as time will allow us and laws will allow us so that we can make progress on this. So thank you, August, for that presentation. Okay, we have, we have on discussion and action items, we've got the approval of the minutes from the April 7th meeting. And do I have a motion for approval of those minutes?
So moved.
All right. And do I have a second?
I'll second. Okay, go. Charlie, got it.
And any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Great. Thank you. Okay, the next point we have on our discussion and action items is Rocky Mountaineer. The, the train is scheduled, it's already, they've already, they've been working on this for obviously a couple of years. They finally signed the contracts with Intrepid and with Union Pacific. So they're ready to come to the county to get confirmation of being able to bring the train into Moab. However, I had written, if you've read through the documentation that I sent, we've run into a bit of a hiccup here with planning and zoning because they're requesting several, several things that these, from agencies and whatever. But I wanted you to be aware of this situation because this could be sort of the first of many things that could impact our ability to move forward with different types of businesses, with different types of opportunities. And I want to make sure that our, our land use codes, you know, really don't impede our ability to bring, you know, opportunity to, to our community. One of the, you know, this company is very well-respected in the Canadian market. This is their first venture into the US, but they are going to hire people locally. They're going to have an office, not a big office, but a small office locally. They're going to use our outfitters. They've already got thousands of people booked into the hotels utilizing our hotel rooms. And I might add that these visitors are the types of visitors that aren't coming with a UTV or a bike or an RV. They're just getting off the train and they have a lot of money. They've got a lot of disposable income. So it's just the kind of client that we want to come here to Moab. So according to them, they have 5,000 paid guests who are already bought the package. But unless we can get approval from planning and zoning with where they are going to land and drop the passengers from the train onto the coaches, we, it could, it could be a potential challenge for, for them. So Emily, I'm not sure if you're aware of this situation with, if you've been apprised of this at all with...
No, this hasn't come before the body, so I'm going to ask Abby about it. Do you get a sense that it's more to do with just staffing issues and a lack of clarity of direction? Or do we feel like this is a regulatory issue that may involve changes?
I think it's a regulatory issue. And I think it's, Mary Hoffheim indicated that, and that she said that all developed and undeveloped land is zoned and developed as determined by the land use code. And she said the only way to permit any land use in the county is to process it as outlined. And she goes through the whole thing, the articles, et cetera. And she said that Section 3.1 use table in the land use code, the most closely related use that you have requested was a train passenger terminal, which is actually what you are proposing. But they're actually not going to construct any building or, and they're not constructing anything.
It's the use. It's not the construction itself. But I would say this is probably something that we might want to just take up. If we, if the county feels like this is an opportunity for us to create economic diversity, then this seems like something that we should be looking at as a planning and zoning commission to send a recommendation one way or another to the county commission. Because the county needs to lean into it. We've got a meeting, like we, we might be even able to get it onto the agenda this week as a discussion item. I'll talk to Mary and Abby about that to start to get that process started.
Again, I'm, I'm not with the company or I have nothing to do with it. I'm just, they reached out to me because they're having, they're, they're very concerned because they, they've gotten their contracts confirmed with all the hotels and the outfitters and they, the, you know, the tour operators and everyone else. So I just want to sort of put that on your radar and let everyone know. But these are, these are sort of the types of things that I want to make sure that, that if we do have an opportunity with a particular company or an organization that wants to come in here, that we can be a little bit nimble or find a way to make it work. Because if they're going to employ people here locally, you know, rent space, bring in revenue into the community, I just want to make sure that we're, and they're a reputable company, you know, sustainable company, all of that. So anyway.
Yeah, I would say, Gabe, maybe this is something where we should bring it up as a discussion. I'm at the planning commission, but maybe the county commission could take that as well and give some direction to us. I could see this being sort of superficially controversial just given the investment in the tourism sector and also just raise questions around public use for residents versus beneficial uses that primarily benefit outside employers and tourists. But it'd be great to get more county direction there before the planning commission goes too far.
Yeah, I agree. I'd be happy to advocate for getting that on the agenda. And yeah, I'm looking forward to learning more about what, what are the actual barriers here that we're looking at and what the challenges might be or how easy it might be to sort of overcome them.
Right. Well, I appreciate you both taking that up and looking into investigating that only because I think that it, it can be a positive impact to the community from a revenue standpoint with all of the local entrepreneurs being able to take advantage of the, you know, the passengers that they're bringing in and the fact that these are the type of higher-paying, a different demographic than what we normally have. So that, that's great. And again, I have no skin in the game other than to say that they've reached out to me and I'd like to be able to sort of help them to move the, this whole project forward because they're going from Denver to Glenwood Springs and then from Glenwood Springs to Moab. So great. Okay. All right. And then we have, oops, lost my place here. All right. So we also have on the agenda, a, I think, the SEU ALG and the SEU EDD. Jerry Gamber had reached out to me about the prioritizing a list of projects for the county. And the request has to be in on May 17th. We're going to be sending out, and this is due to the ARP funding that is going to be available. So Gabriel, I'm not sure if they reached out to you or not about what we would need or what we would be looking at for infrastructure or, you know, implement infrastructure projects in our county. But this might be something because they will have millions of dollars at the state level to allocate to us. So it's really something to think about that we can get on their radar. They're trying to prepare, prepare a preliminary, you know, schedule of what they think each county and our four county area will need. So I'm not sure if there's anything on the county commission radar or even with planning and zoning, anything that we might need that needs to be put onto that list.
Yeah, they did reach out to me and my initial thought is to look at our prior, the commission's prioritized list, request list for, to CIB. Just using that, using that as a baseline. Of course, it can be adjusted from there, but it's a document that's already on the books that the commission has provided their input for. And I believe that they would all qualify as infrastructure or most, if not all.
Got it. Okay. So I think, so, so I will let them know. They reached out to me and asked me, and I said, I, I would have to defer back to, to the county commissioners. But you're right. I think the CIB listing would be the first place to start because you're talking about big infrastructure, you know, projects that that funding could go towards. So that, that, that would be, all right, I'll let them know that. So thank you. All right. So I want to now circle back to the economic development strategic, the plan that we have. And I'd see Nora, Nora Shepherd is, I believe, on the... Hi Nora, thank you for joining. We wanted to, or August and Ben and I have had a lot of discussion about the opportunities that USU area can bring. We're so excited about the, the new campus. But all of the property that's around the campus that is owned by Sitla is, I think they own over 300 acres of property there. And when I looked at the original layout, it was more about residential housing. And my, my concern was that if they're bringing in higher-priced, you know, $500,000, million-dollar homes, second homeowners, and really trying to benefit from that, that is really not going to help our local community. And I was wondering if we, if you could give us sort of an overview of what their plans are? Because it would be, I think it would behoove them to take a look at how that land that they have, because we're so, you know, we're, we're in this situation where land is so expensive and we have little of the land, how can we make it more useful and more beneficial for the local community? Rather than having just more of the same of what we do not want. Overnight rentals, higher priced housing, you know, how do we help, how do we help convince Sitla that they need to take a different approach to this? So we wanted your insight.
Well, I've been chatting with a representative from the developer that Sitla has partnered with. So that's what Sitla does. They send out like an RFP and with certain parameters and, and they try to get a development partner. And they have done that and they chose a development partner. And I've been working with the consultant that is, that represents that development partner. And both when the original, so it was annexed, oh gosh, I can't remember the dates. Anyway, the property was annexed and there, when it was annexed, there was zoning assigned to certain areas on the parcel. And the zoning that was applied was R4, which is our highest density residential zone, and C4, which is our most permissive commercial zone. And the plans I have seen to date, and they continue to work on them and evolve, is almost all residential. They are proposing some commercial and what they call like a resort village. So they're definitely targeting that upper end resort village kind of thing. The same thing I think they're thinking about in Grant County. You know, out by, up-
Oh, but past, north of this town.
Yeah.
North of town, yeah.
And I think they're talking about the same thing there. And, and my initial conversations, they were talking about 3,000 units, which is a ton. Their first phase, they really want to concentrate on some student housing and some multifamily housing. So their first phase is not really oriented toward nightly rentals. It's more oriented towards students and more affordable kinds of units by design, not by deed restriction. And then as they move into later phases, there's one big chunk kind of in the middle that they want this resort feel and some commercial, a commercial village, which is kind of tough on a hillside, but anyway. And then up above that, they want high-end single-family lots. And it's tricky when you deal with Sitla because we don't have an awful lot of control. And it's, it's very frustrating, you know, for us as planners to, to sort of get told that this is what we're thinking and not really have an awful lot of, not a lot of power to do a whole lot.
Right.
And they certainly would have to meet all the zoning provisions. But at this point, I don't, I don't know what we can do in terms of, you know, we can certainly try to sit down with Sitla and the developer and chat about some of these other opportunities that they have not thought of. I think that they have partnered with this, Sitla has partnered with this developer who's primarily like a residential slash, you know, resort, commercial type of developer. In fact, the, the person I've been working with, I worked with in Park City many years ago. He worked for a consulting firm. And so I've known him for a long time and it's the same kind of work. You know, they're doing mostly housing, nightly rental is what they're, this is. And they've already signed a contract with that developer. So I don't know how much we can change at this point. It probably would be worth having a conversation with Troy Harold. They tend to be, they believe in their mission.
You're right, right.
And their mission is to provide as much, you know, as much value and revenue as they can. And the schools, you know, the kids, which is all great and good. But I, you know, my, I think it would dramasti- drastically change.
Well, just so you know, I met with Ben Hark from the GOED, the governor's, our governor's office of economic opportunity or Go Utah. And I did bring this up to him. And I think, I hope, and I don't know even if the governor can do anything, but I'm hoping that they will readdress it, especially since we have, we're in such dire straits with lack of affordable housing. You know, we have very little storefront available at all. And I think under the circumstances of the state, you know, us, not only us, but other communities having a real crunch with housing, lack of affordable housing, that their mission, you know, needs to be addressed. And, and is it possible to, to lease that property in perpetuity to a developer? That, you know, work out some other arrangement so that it can benefit the local community? I mean, you know, we're putting the brakes on overnight rentals and all of these other things. And I don't know why it's right to let Sitla just come in and do whatever they want, especially this day and age. So because I really think it, it hinders our ability for diversification, brings more of the same. So I'm willing to do what I can on my end and talk to the people at the state. I don't know what they can do, but I think the governor really has to get involved in this in some way.
I would say that's the only way that it would change, it would, it would move the needle for Sitla.
Yeah.
If somebody told them that they had to.
Right.
Otherwise, you know, they're pretty, you know, their, their, their mission is to be partnered with developers and they don't really care.
Right, right. And I, I just think that that's not, in this day and age, in the situation that we're in in Utah, that has to be revisited. So I'm not, you know, I don't know if it will make it. I'm, I'm going to keep pushing on it and pushing the buttons of the people I work with from the governor's office, you know, of equal, of economic development or Go Utah, to see what they can do. Because I don't think that we should, should just sit here and roll over because that's what they want to do. You know, we, we fought other battles and I think this is a battle that we need to stand up and fight for, for our community. So I'm not sure, Gabriel, I don't know if you want to weigh in on this situation or not.
Emily has something to say.
Who does?
Emily.
Oh, Emily.
I can pause, I can hold.
Go ahead.
I'll just-
Go right ahead.
All I want to say real quick is, I, you know, I, I certainly agree with you in principle, Elaine. And I also sort of want to be clear-eyed about the challenge of sort of, you know, challenging Sitla in that way. So perhaps one approach could be to sort of, you know, reach some sort of compromise where maybe, you know, that maybe, you know, I think a, a win for, a win for the county would be even just a, some, you know, maybe even small portion of that development would, could really be open to input with, for the needs and, and input of the community. Rather than maybe just sort of trying to, try to get in their way and, and what they're trying to accomplish overall. You know, rather than maybe trying to sort of, really trying to annoy them in that way. Maybe just ask, hey, can, you know, maybe there's a slice that you could sort of, you know, offer, you know, in a, in a way for these other types of opportunities. That's all I would have to say right now.
Emily?
So I've had a handful of conversations with Troy after he and, and Mark Lacy's firm made a presentation to the planning commission a few months ago about a northern parcel that they're looking at. And this area around the university came up. And, you know, my big question to him was, how is Sitla defining fiduciary duty in an era where that definition is involving pretty radically and pretty dramatically, even with large financial firms? The concept of a B Corp, the financial, the concept of, of not discounting the future as much, right? Because so much of the financial, fiduciary duty has historically meant value extraction. And, and what I was pushing to him is, how does Sitla balance opportunity cost in their economic calculations of, of the cost of a project and the value of a project? And I think that that might be an avenue to start with is, is objectively talking about not just our opinion on a single project, but to better understand as a community and as a state, quite frankly, how we are calculating opportunity costs and economic value against community costs. Because, you know, and my point to him at the planning commission meeting and in subsequent conversations, and he was actually quite, quite open to this idea, to hollow out and extract from one community to benefit another doesn't create net benefit in the state. And in fact, it can create long-term harm that perpetuates across generations and certainly within an economy. And so I think that there's an economic position to take that is much more objective and that is, is far more impactful than just individual projects, while also pursuing opportunities to diversify this project. But some things that, that he mentioned that he was interested in exploring for this area in particular was, you know, innovation centers, entrepreneurial incubation, ways to balance the housing development and the extractive parts from actual community investment. And I think there's a really great pattern we adopted with the HDO developments to say, not only do they need to be instituted in phases, but those phases need to be balanced. So if I as a developer want to put 100 units in and 80% of those units will be deed restricted, I can't build the first 20 that aren't deed restricted to fund the others. I have to make sure that that percentage carries in every phase of development. And I think maybe there's an opportunity there to say, what is the community benefit that we are giving, that we are gaining in response to the extraction? And how can we ensure that that is phased in and not just, you know, weighted to the end and try and find a, a partnership and a balance there?
I totally agree with you. I'm sorry, I totally agree with you. I just, now that they've entered into a contract with this developer, I don't know if they've limited the options and what they, how they could roll that back. That would be my concern in terms of timing. But yeah, I, it's, you know, it's really scary that two big huge pieces of property that could have thousands and thousands of units that would give us, you know, tax money, sales tax and, and hotel tax and all that, but second home tax. But certainly, yeah, they're not really geared toward that at this point in time.
I would, I would like to add just that in, in, in the negotiation piece, my understanding is that there was a master plan created in collaboration with the community many years ago. And at the time, the big need was affordable housing. And so that's what they did with good intention. So I think if we leverage that, you know, their, and their good intention, things have changed. These are the kinds of things that we'd like to see now that would be beneficial, along with, I love Emily's approach as well to talk about the economic and e- even thinking bigger than just this particular project.
Right, yes, I, I agree. It's a, it really should be statewide, looking at it in, in totality. Because it, and I think Utah's in a, you know, we're in a situation, not only in Grant County, but many of the other counties are facing the same challenges. So I think, I think it's right. So I'm not sure how we'd want to move forward in that direction. You know, Emily, I know you've had a lot of conversation. Any recommendations on, you know, how we move this, you know, discussion forward with them?
I think it needs to be multi-pronged. I mean, Nora's point, the most urgent thing is understanding the, you know, any nature of flexibility with that agreement. And, you know, are they willing to come to the table and talk to us? And what power do we have, whether it's from the state economic board or, or some other entity to back us up? So that seems like probably the most urgent piece of this. More generally speaking, I think having a twofold lobbying approach. One is around these economic impacts and directing those questions to the governor's office. You know, how is Sitla calculating economic value and economic cost? We should know the answer to that and they should be able to give it to us. And if they can't, you know, that seems like a, a reason to encourage them pumping the brakes on future development. But also, you know, what are the opportunities that we do see around that area for development that could create value? And one of the ideas that I pitched to Troy is, I mean, I come from the venture capital world and technology. You know, with Sitla, who has a history of investing in projects, is there a, an alternative approach to investment for them to create long-term gain and compounding gains over time without extracting and building? With this idea that we have to build to gain value is just such a, an outdated model of value creation. And I think we can, we can be innovative and we can challenge the state to be innovative and creative in ways to create money versus just this old school build to gain. And, you know, that's the only way forward. So I think there's a few things we can do, but starting with the, the understanding the current project dynamics and putting urgency there is probably number one. That's my very, you know, not knowing much more than what we're discussing here.
I guess we, we could recommend a, Nora, would you recommend us contacting them to give us an overview of, or an update of what their plans are at this juncture?
I, they haven't given me any plans yet, so I'm not sure that they're ready to do that. They had a, they've had a couple of conversations with me and they met with the mayor once. So, but yeah, I think the sooner the better because they're planning along. Yeah, I, I'd say it's certainly worth a try. I guess I'm a little jaded just because I've worked in the state for so long. In many different capacities and-
That's understandable. Well, I, I really, you know, I'm look, I'm looking at it from a different point of view. And I, I really, I really, you know, we want to work with them. However, I just see that we're, what they're looking at, planning out is really not helpful to our community at this point. I think it's pretty devastating considering everything that we've been going through over the last couple of years and, you know, stopping overnight rentals and just everything. So I think, I think it's, you know, would we want to put a committee of two people together to start working? I mean, you know, I, I think we should be open to what, recommendations on what might, what might be the best way forward. Lacey, did you have a comment?
Yeah, well, yeah. I think just, just a little bit different perspective. I agree with everything that's being said. I would love to be able to encourage, you know, some different development there. It sounds like the first phase, however, could maybe be helpful. But I guess I've just been thinking a lot lately about the housing situation and, and, you know, what can be done. And I'm, I would love to kind of switch our, you know, just our approach to how do we incentivize developers? How do we, you know, how do we make it benefit everybody? Because I think we've been coming at it, you know, with this, this heavy hand and you need to do it for the good of the community. And yes, you would hope that that happens. But I really think that if we could be creative ourselves in incentivizing and, and offering up, kind of like Emily was saying, you know, offering up some different ideas here of how it can benefit both parties, that's going to be way more advantageous in the future. And just really kind of apply to everything that we do on this board at our county levels, at our city levels. It, I just feel like we need kind of a shift of, how do we start incentivizing and encouraging people to do, you know, what will meet the basic needs of the community?
Carly, I don't know if you want to weigh in on this subject and get your thoughts.
I think a lot of really insightful things have been said. I, I do like the idea of working, I mean, they're kind of too affordable housing. Sorry, I've got, I'm looking at like my screen, my bigger screen. It's so bright, I keep drifting off to it, so I must look weird. You know, when it comes to affordable housing, I really like Lacey's, you know, we, we need to look at incentives when it comes to sort of run-of-the-mill, our usual development that's happening down here. But Sitla's different because it really needs to start with the way they, like Emily was saying, sort of evaluate and assess the benefit of the project. So somewhere in their calculation, we need to have like affordable housing or like a quality of life or component. Or I, I'm just speculating because I have no idea what their valuation scheme looks like at all. So, and, and we are looking at like more and more big developments like that. So it might, we might take several years to try to persuade the governor's office or Sitla management to have different criteria, maybe for resort communities or rural communities. We're, you know, we're always saying we're kind of special. We are and it impacts us differently.
Well, the concentration of Sitla parcels with the way that, I mean, I, I didn't know this until recently. So it'd be really interesting, if, if you're not familiar with the way that the Sitla parcels were essentially just scattered. It's like what parcel 16 in every plot or something, I, part, plot 16 in every parcel or- It's like what parcel sixteen in every plot or something like part plot sixteen in every parcel or something like that. Basically, what's happened is over time, all of the parcels in the areas of larger development have been uh, traded out. And so you have, you know, up in Salt Lake and down in St. George, uh, SITLA parcels got traded out so that they could have private development. And it's left concentration in areas of Washington County and Grand County pred- predominantly. And so we're carrying the burden going forward of any development. And they're also concentrated into larger parcels, which means to be them, to make them economically feasible. You're looking at large-scale developments versus like smaller individual lot developments. And so like, this is something that's just only going to become more and more and more of an issue. And we really are special in the sense that we're sort of the last remaining flower on the wall for it to be developed by SITLA. And so um, that relationship, I think, has to be rethought because we need to be a critical partner to them. Otherwise, we are going to continue to suffer uh, the, the cost in an inequitable way for our goals as a community and ultimately our impact to the state. So you know, this isn't just a, I, I, I think the idea that like Grand County fights SITLA and everything, that needs to be readjusted from both sides because Grand County and SITLA are in bed together now going forward. If SITLA is going to continue to utilize those parcels as the primary means of creating financial, you know, financial gains over time.
Right, right, right.
And I think that does start with the governor's office. We have a new governor. Um, he's from rural.
I, I agree. And that's why I cert- that's why I brought the subject up. Um, and I, I know that they're going to move it forward for a discussion. I mean, it's something that has to be discussed. It's not something we can just, oh, because we've done it that way for the last fifty years. We're going to keep doing it. You know, times are different, uh, way of life is different, things are different around the, the state. So I, I think there is a time to sit down and and just, you know, talk about what's best for them, what's best for us. What are the, you know, op- opportunities that are out there? And, and how can we make it beneficial for everyone, the community and them? So um, I um, I, I hope that we, um, so maybe what, you know, recommendations, do we want to put a small committee together to maybe start and maybe talk to SITLA about having a dialogue? Or um, you know, Emily, do you think that that might work? I know you've had meetings with them, so I'm kind of relying on you for your, some direction in that.
Yeah, um, so, and, and August, I saw your comment there. So SITLA as the financial entity over those parcels is a relatively new thing. But the actual um, formation of the parcels themselves are part of the formation of the state. So this goes way, way back. It was just a managed, um, it was all about creating uh, crop zones in the areas. So you know, let them create community gardens to support the agricultural growth of that area. But eventually they realized homes created a lot more value than cucumbers. So um, I, I, like I said, I, I, I think it probably has to be a multi-pronged approach. Um, having a um, having the county take initiative to try and solve for those two things. Um, can we understand the economic equation of SITLA? And in a time of increasing concentration of these parcels competing against increasing housing and and other commercial needs? Is there even openness to that? Like, I, I would be very eager to be um, a, a member of whatever committee starts to have those. But I do think also we need to be thinking, um, you know, innovatively for different types of investment opportunities and reaching into the business community, potentially up to like the Silicon Slopes community. I'd love to know, is there room for us to be a satellite uh, to some of those companies now that post-COVID? A lot of these companies are going to be supporting a distributed workforce. Is there opportunity to combine that with? Um, you know, overnight housing or vacation housing for use of those companies and also local um, more attainable and affordable housing as a byproduct of that? Can we combine these in a mixed-use way? Um, and also is there interest in, you know, so any kind of like venture portfolio to create opportunities for economic diversification in Grand County and other gateway communities as an, as an alternative means of investment for SITLA's money and an alternative use of those, of those plans? So um, and I'm sure there's other ideas I'm not thinking of, but those are two sort of separate but dual-track ways of approaching this. And I would maybe recommend we try and do both at the same time and see where, which carries water. That would be my take. But the more that we lean in with um, with an innovative end to the future and not just, not just fighting individual projects, the more successful we'll be in the long run.
Yeah, well, um, I would, I guess I would like to bring up, would we like to form uh, you know, a small committee of two people? Um, I don't know, would any, and I guess we need to um, make this an action item since we're in a discussion and action item. Would someone uh, you know, like to bring, make a motion so that we can form a small committee? And, and maybe it's two people out of this group uh, that will sort of work on this um, project and, and, you know, so if someone would like to make a motion, uh, okay, Emily?
Yeah, I'll move to um, appoint a two-person committee on behalf of the larger body to uh, reach out to representatives from the government and the business community and identify opportunities uh, for the uh, body to vote on whether or not to pursue.
Great.
With a timeline of six weeks to returning back to the larger body.
Okay.
Or I guess our next meeting's in a month, so two months maybe.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second.
Lacey? And um, do, okay, uh, any just further discussion?
Uh, not a discussion point, but just would like to point out that us as staff um, would love to add capacity to those initiatives so that if, if you're scared of getting on that board and worried it's going to take you a lot of time on your plate.
And I think we'll wait on that just a, a moment.
Okay.
So um, do we have um, any other discussion?
Is the, I, I think the two-person side is to avoid a quorum. Is that the thinking?
Yes, yes, yeah. Um, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay. All right, and then we'll need um, volunteers for that board if, okay, so Emily wants to volunteer. Do we have anyone else?
I'm happy to as well, unless.
Carly? I, I think it's great because we have somebody from the city and someone from the county. We have both county and city representation. That's awesome.
Elaine, I can also send around the original SITLA, the original USU area master plan.
Okay.
And they did an update, I think in two thousand nineteen.
That would be great. That would be great. So we'll um, we'll look at having maybe by, let's see. This is may, um, so maybe by the July meeting, um, we'll have something that you all, does that seem to work? Uh, Emily and Carly?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Alrighty, um, and August, I wanted to go back to that chart that you had um, that we can take a look at just so we can see what follow-up we have on that particular um, information or content that's on there, because I think there are things that we have to follow up. Okay, so, um, there you go. So I, uh, I guess we can review what.
I, if you're looking at this chart, I can also pull up the actual sheet so we can navigate it, if this is what you're referring to.
Yeah, whatever makes it. If you want to go through that on what the, the actual action steps are.
Okay, yeah.
That we need to review so we can sort of decide um, how we start to move forward or if we have to sign anything, particular action steps, we can do that. Brandon, I forgot to ask if you wanted to weigh in on anything.
Sorry, wouldn't unmute there. Uh, not really my area of expertise on housing, so.
Well, I think, you know, for me, a lot of this is getting um, involved and immersed in it. And it's, it's kind of exciting that we're, you know, moving into sort of territory that's unfamiliar. I think that all, that helps us all to, to sort of learn more. So, all right, August, you want to go through that so we can um, go through the action steps?
Sure. So, so this includes um, everything that was on the outcomes and key results from the, from the action plan, as well as a couple of other items that we've added ourselves. Um, and just kind of what's in here, it's the action step, wh- what the outcome would be, um, which strategy it falls under um, from the action plan as well as a due date. So as an example, is that here we have identify individuals and partners um, for the council, create it. Um, and we've noted that we've accomplished that. So just to go through these, and I think that a lot of these are just straight from the report. So, you know, we, we can modify them as necessary, um, but this is just kind of what's in there. So first is contact fifteen companies, five in each targeted sector, um, with expansion potential by the end of this year. Um, with the outcome of attracting one company um, from each sector by the end of the following year. Uh, I'll skip this one. Uh, this is coordinate direction uh, with the county with regards to a regulatory restructuring. So taking a look at all of the land use codes and ensuring that they are as the um, as the resolution and the general plan says, making sure that they're effective, efficient, you know, and that developers can do what they need to in a timely manner with the goals of the county in mind. Um, with the idea of going through a process um, with most likely the planning commission, planning and zoning department, um, and perhaps even hiring a consultant to look through those things and have, having a third-party look at what's in there. Um, the idea of completing that by December twenty twenty-two. Um, this is, is with regards to making sure that us in the county has an ongoing point of contact with the business community, with the city, um, with regional and state folks and creating a economic development forum in which um, either individually with each partner or altogether, um, by the end of this year, having a conversation um, about how we're aligned between across those, all, all those various institutions.
And, and I was mentioning to August that I thought that um, if we would create a forum, it would be for the chamber, having participation from the chamber. Um, it would be for um, from the governor's office, uh, Go Utah office and getting them involved. It would be from the uh, Southeastern Utah Association of Local Governments. So we had those three entities, and I can't remember the other two um, entities that I mentioned. Um, but to sort of make it sort of a quarterly forum where we bring th- these individual groups of people together and then circle back to report back to this larger group. So um, uh, and, you know, feel free to weigh in on this so we can put uh, notes uh, down so that we, you know, if, if you think there should be others involved uh, in this forum just to, to discuss how, you know, have another set of eyes from another group looking at um, what we're, how we're moving forward. Um, that would be great. So feel free to weigh in. Okay. Go ahead.
Yep, um. This is coordinating with, between the county and the city to designate specific areas as nodes for future development. Um, and then updating the county and city codes accordingly. Um, this is educating the council with regards to the incentives that are available to us. I think this connects off the point that Carly and Lacey were underscoring, you know, what do we have in our toolkit? Um, once we've decided what we want to see, how can we make that happen using um, as much of the resources that we have at our disposal from federal, state and local money? Um, this is, we're council. Ben, what's up? What is this one? Maybe I have to refer to the OKR really quickly.
I'm sorry, your screen is very small for me, so I'm just going to. No, you're good.
I can also refer to the document.
Yes, that would probably be best.
All right, give me one second, because this is just a quick summary we put together before the meeting. So this is referring to this is referred to, this is referring to trying to figure out, um, I believe, a quality of life assessment um, with regards to, so I can't, I cannot read this. This is really small.
That's okay. We'll, we'll just move on.
We'll go back to this one. And then we added a couple of these, so, you know, we outlined the target sectors that are in the actual action plan. So we want to by September, you know, lock down what, what is the council's opinion of? These are the targeted sectors and therefore let's go after them. Um, whether or not it is the three pre- previously identified sectors or if there's other sectors that um, the council has identified and formally acknowledged that so that we can um, you know, activate, act, act on those sectors.
And, and really Carly and Nora, I think it would be important for us to make sure that the city is weighing in on these sectors. You know, we did a sector analysis, but it, it's about six years old. I don't know how much that change, changes in an area. Um, and I did talk to the two gentlemen that conducted um, that whole process, which seemed like it was forever. Um, and I told them we weren't ready to go back at it again and that we formed this group and that we would discuss um, the informa- you know, the content that was kind of came from that study. Um, and then determine if we needed to circle back with them next year to maybe revisit what, you know, if the sectors changed. Uh, or if we're looking at it from a different vantage point now versus six years ago. So um, I think it's important because again, we don't want to, we don't want to go after um, uh, sectors or opportunities that we might feel, say, in economic development that we think this would be great, but yet the county commissioners don't feel they're not, you know, supportive of that. And even this, I think we need to go to the city council and ask the same thing so that we have sort of uh, uh, you know, everybody in, everybody informed and everybody agreeing to how we're moving forward. So um, I just, I think it's important for us to be sort of unified in that, the city and the county. So Carly, if, if you think that's a bad idea, you need to let me know, or if you think it's a good idea, let me know. And, and we'll try to move forward. But I think partnering, you know, with you all at the city is extremely important for us as we move economic development, diversification forward.
Great.
And then um, consider county water constraints, um, because we, we talked about agriculture. But uh, we're not sure that, um, based on the uh, presentation last night about water. Um, you know, we're not sure that agriculture is really something that we can support. Um, uh, duh, until we determine the water table and is it possible to have water from the Colorado River? And I mean, it's a really um, pretty, um, no pun intended, deep subject for the water. But I think we need to, um, before we move into agriculture, we, we need to really have a better assessment of, of what, you know, what we need to accomplish that. Um, and then again, focusing on USU, um, that's kind of our shining star there in uh, south. And I think that that can bring so much to our community, uh, and I'm very excited about it. So um, uh, whatever we can do. So if there's anything in this particular, on this chart, action items that you feel dates need to be changed, um, I think we can share this with you if you want to weigh in on it and put your comments down. Um, I think that'll get everyone engaged. Feel free um, to just tell us, you know, what you'd like to change, what you'd like to add. Um, so to me, this is sort of a. living, breathing document that we can all work from. So any thoughts?
On the water constraint real quick, I think that's kind of a little too narrow in that it only addresses the Moab Valley.
What's that again?
The water constraint, the way it's worded, it really only addresses the Moab Valley. When you look up at the Green River area, they've added significant acreage of alfalfa over the last five years. And I, I know the state can, is working in that, that area to continue to develop agriculture. And based on Green River and Colorado River rights, there's quite a few rights that Utah is trying to advance. I would think we should probably broaden that statement to-
Okay, okay. Yeah, feel free, feel free to weigh in on that. So we'll share the document with you and we would love your input on that. That would help us tremendously. So.
And on that, as we're making comments, please do make them as comments instead of direct edits or else it'll get lost in the sauce and we'll never know what was it before and who did what when. So comments please would be appreciated.
Can I ask a question? And I'm sorry, I may have missed this in the review. As we're talking about development nodes, affordable housing, transit, all of these kind of collectively come together. You know, looking to especially, you know, whether it's suburban Green River, probably not, more like Thompson is a potential also development node. Where does that fit into this? I mean, affordable housing ideally is built by creating affordable housing near to where people work, but it can also be created by creating nodes of housing development outside of that central working area, but with transit options to get people into the commercial downtown. Like, is that something that might be out of scope for this year? But I'm just, I'm curious if that's even a part of, of what this larger picture looks like.
I, I think it should be. I think it, I think it's something we have to look at. I mean, I would agree that it has to be addressed and should be weaved into this. I think it's some, you know, like a place like Thompson, you know, when I moved here 15 years ago, I, I always felt that Thompson could become a place where I, I thought that the county should have bought property out there, but we should have had the property out there and that could have become, you know, workforce housing. And then we could have had transportation to bring workers in. But, you know, here we are 15 year late, 15 years later and the property prices out there are, are going up and develop. And I know there's a developer who's looking out there. There are things that are being looked at. So I definitely think that that has to be part of the conversation. I agree with you, Emily. So we can certainly, you know, and you can add anything else to this on the right-hand side of the document. And then we'll, we'll bring it up at the next, I guess we could bring it up at the next meeting and then we could make it an action item and really put this, you know, define this and put it in place and start working on, on all of this. So Gabriel, how do you feel about that?
Just in general on providing input to this document or for Thompson or-
Yes, yes. I mean, do you think it's, do you think this is the type of document that will help? You know, if we can define and sort of have everybody weigh in and then have, you know, maybe act, have these action items more clearly defined as what Brandon brought up. And then we can, you know, vote on them officially at the next meeting and then put, put them out there so we can at least officially have a working document that actually could be presented to the county commission.
I think, yeah, I think it looks great and thank you for preparing it. Thank you to your office for preparing it.
Well, yep, they, they did a great job and we could also present this to the city to bring them up to speed on what we're working on. So if that's our, if that sounds, since this is a discussion and not actually an action item, we could, you'll weigh in on it. We'll put everything together. We'll come back at the next meeting and present the, the final, this final document and we'll, we'll vote as to its implementation, if that works for everyone.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest for ease of process, I'm going to create a new sheet in this document or tab, as it were. And that's like kind of like proposed amendments to the document. And so you can have line item amendment proposals with who, what your name is and what you're proposing to change. And that way it'll keep the primary document clean and then we can go through it in a simple process fashion during the next meeting.
Great. Alright, sounds good. On the next, we have the Utah Alliance for Economic Development is holding their meeting here and we'll have people from all over the state attending from the private sector and, and and from government. So I'm really excited about that. They haven't been to Moab for quite some time. So they'll be here October 7th and we'll be at the hoodoo. And I think it's going to be a really, I don't have an agenda yet. I did ask, reach out and ask the mayor if she could give a bit of a speech, but I think it, I've attended a couple of these meetings with the alliance and they have different people present and different discussions. So I think it would be interesting. You do have to register for this, but it will be at the hoodoo and it generally will run from eight, I'm going to say eight o'clock till probably one during the day, but it's a chance for us to network with other, you know, individuals from the private sector and, and from government. So I think it's a really, a really good, it's a really good organization and I value everything that they bring to the table. And then on February 7th and 8th, we, we're going to have the Canyonlands Business Summit that we're working on. And we will have that as well at the hoodoo. And we'll have it in conjunction with San Juan County and we'll have virtual and in person. So San Juan County will have, they'll listen to our speakers and vice versa. We'll listen to their speakers. So we're in the process of coordinating the business summit. And as we get a little bit closer, we're looking for, you know, speakers that will, we've tailored the, the last agenda a little bit. We're, we're trying to get some really engaged speakers to come and really bring in, talk about diversity and a bunch of other things. So I think it'll be really good, but that's February 7th and 8th and we'll be sending out an official, save the date for, for that as well. Let's see, what else? I think that is it on my agenda. Does anyone have anything else that they'd like to discuss?
Elaine, I was just going to say that, I was just going to let the group know that we did follow up with the internet with Justin Anthony.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So Elaine and I had a meeting with Justin Anthony about kind of the internet issue that the Emory Telecom is having. And he was very interested, great to listen. He was going to take it back. He's kind of talking about maybe on a federal level, they can, they can look into that law that is kind of causing all the problems because it's a pretty, it's a pretty old law and he agreed as well. And so, so there is a little bit of movement on that. I don't know how quick that'll happen or not, but-
Well, Lacey, we had a follow-up call with Brock Johansson from Emory Telecom.
Yeah.
Was that this week, August? I can't remember. It was, it was not-
It was like two days ago. Might have been yesterday, in fact.
I don't know. Anyway, we, he did explain and went over all the maps and we had a chance to look at everything. But we do, and the, the thing that I came away with was that we do have one gig service to almost every, everybody in Moab City. Realizing that, yes, we do have to move toward fiber and that will come, but right now he assured us that, you know, that that is something that right now we can say that, that that's what they can provide. I think that we hope that there will be some type of legal ruling, hopefully in their favor, fingers crossed, in a couple of weeks that may help this whole situation and help Emory be able to, you know, start to move forward. We'll see. So we're, we're waiting on that and he, you know, really spent a lot of time. August, I don't know if there's anything you want to bring up from that conversation that the group might find interesting, but.
Yeah, I mean, his, his thing is he wants us in our branding of Moab to call it a, a gig community. You know, we do have better internet than a lot of places in the country, even in this state.
Right.
Without the fiber. You know, obviously Spanish Valley, part of Grand County being the outlier there. Castle Valley is almost totally gig fibered up. They're finishing that project very shortly. And there's a bunch of other little bits and pieces, but you know, I think his, his, his thing was that like, we do have the gig connection. But it's on a copper coax, basically TV network and that, that is costly to maintain. So the five-year project is bringing fiber to pretty much every home and business in, in Grand County and even on the Spanish Valley, San Juan side as well. And that there-
That was, that was like such a, having that conversation with him calmed my nerves. So I, I was feel much, much better and hopefully we'll hear some good news in a couple of weeks. And by the way, they are looking for a, a person that, that is really good with technology that can work and service our businesses locally here. That can work for Emory Telecom and they will pay $30 an hour for this job. They'll give the person, you know, a truck, he'll be a, this, he or she, because there could be a woman out there, I don't know, that could troubleshoot for the businesses and go in and help them with their, you know, their problems. But he reached out to me and asked, and I, I really don't know of anyone, but if there is someone that you know of, please let me know and I'll put you in, or put them in contact with, with him. But it's full benefits, full, full-time, $30 an hour. They get, you know, be here in Moab because what they have to do is send people down or over, which is very costly and it really doesn't serve us, the community, because they have to find someone. So if you know of anyone that's, you know, in that tech field and, and good with a computer, that would be great.
Talk to the guidance office at the high school. That would be a great vocational opportunity.
I said that to Lacey, just said that before the call. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm really glad. I've been the downstream recipient out in, in the southern part of the county of these issues and I've had, unfortunately, you know, I work remotely with a lot of people who are leaving San Francisco for places like Austin. I had a couple of people who have seen my internet be so bad over the last couple of months, who had considered looking in our area. We're like, I just couldn't live there if it was that bad. So like this has real impact. Part of that story is I then got on the phone with Verizon to find out if, you know, maybe I could just use a Verizon hotspot. I don't know if this is part of the exploration. I ended up speaking to a senior engineer at Verizon who said they had never seen a cell dish as clogged as ours. And that Spanish Valley and San Juan County is essentially completely not served. First thing he asked me is do you have land? Because they don't have any land to put up a cell tower. I think this will probably have to be solved by San Juan County, given the available land and the impact there. But just to be mindful that it's, it's not just a, it's not just a fiber optic issue. It's also cell coverage. I literally can't make phone calls in my house because the cell tower that points at my house is so far to my north and it's clogged. It's at, it basically, even if I paid them hundreds of dollars a month, they could not give me stable service to make phone calls. So, so this is a larger, yeah, big issue.
I have those same issues, Emily, as well. And I'm wondering, Gabe, maybe you know, because I, I thought that there was a cell tower approved to go up at the arena. Is that, am I thinking right there? Do you know, Gabe?
Yeah, it, it hasn't come back around, actually. I'm curious about where that actually is. I think it did get, I think it did get, did get approved, but I haven't seen it sort of come back.
Yeah, I thought it did get approved. I know I switched from AT&amp;T because my service was bad to Verizon because my service is better. But then again, you've got the opposite. So you're right, it's not just fiber. It, it's a lot of different challenges that, you know, that we face being in a rural area. So, but I feel much better after my conversation and I know they're working on it. So if the rule, whatever ruling is supposed to go through, let's hope that that will be in their favor this, in the next couple of weeks. And, and that will make a big difference. Is there future discussion items I had done that, you know, we're going to talk about looking at the zonings? There's a gentleman that I can, would like to bring in to speak about enterprise zones and opportunity zones. Stuart Clausen is, he does a lot with the, the state. I'd like to bring him on for a, I'll talk to him and if he can, he can give us an update on how those opportunities can help our community and give us some inside information on that. And then we can talk of future items about the Ready Grant. And then the next meeting is scheduled for June 2nd at 3:00 PM. Is there any other further business?
I just, I just crossed my mind when you talked about, you know, searching for, when we have these ideas to look for funding opportunities for these things. Something else to consider potentially, if it's for the benefit of the community is, shoot, I just forgot the name of it. But we got this funding for our campus and also Arroyo Crossing got it.
New market tax credits.
Thank you. Yes, new market tax credit funding. You know, there's, there's, it's very complicated. There's a lot of restrictions, but that's a potential depending on what the project is. And there's one entity in the state that does that, CDFA. And if, if that's something you want to like, maybe meet with Amy Rowland, Rowland to talk to her about what kinds of projects might work for that.
So we actually followed up on that connection, Leana, because you mentioned that in a long ago meeting. So we actually met with Amy and had a great conversation. And she indicated that, you know, it's fairly competitive for them to apply for the federal funding. And there is a new, I think, like trench available in the fall or something along those lines, which they will be applying for. And so it's really a matter of if they get that funding, then they can disperse it amongst projects. So.
Mm-hmm. Yes, she did. And the, the, the outcome of those products influences their ability to get the next-
Right. So do a good job at USA USU.
I'm trying.
Awesome. Well, keep, keep ideas coming. If you have any, anything else that you'd like to discuss or have on the next agenda, let me know. Or a speaker, if you'd like a particular someone to deliver, you know, presentation. And I appreciate that you are all on this council. I really am grateful for your support. And if there's anything that I can do or the staff can do, please reach out. And since there is no further business, I would like to adjourn the meeting. Any objections? No, okay. Thank you guys. I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you, Ben. Thanks all.
Thank you.
Great to meet you. Thank you.